I'm still waiting right there. Hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
You still have your tan, you hold them on to it, huh? Did you get your boat in the water yet? John, did you get your boat in the water yet?
Yeah, it's, oh, it's in on, um, um, Easter.
Oh.
Oh, no, it wasn't, not in Easter, I'm sorry. Two weeks ago, got it in. I had it around once, uh, two beers, two beer lou, and that was it.
How was it? Water level's pretty high, right?
Water level's high, um, still cold.
Yeah.
Saw no milfoil, but it's too cold for that to pop up. Fishermen are out.
Do we have any loo's nesting?
They don't start nesting until soon though, in June, but we haven't, I've seen them, heard them.
Are they gonna take over that island again?
No.
No?
No, we don't want them there because people intrude there.
Yeah.
The kayakers intrude. Uh, but way down where they, that's where they nested last year. So the chick made it pretty far. I don't know if it made it all the way, but it made pretty far, so we'll see what happens.
They're over on that island already.
Oh, are they a little one?
Yeah.
Good. Uh, as, they haven't put signs up yet, have they, or they're just kinda?
No signs yet.
That island that everybody goes to?
No, 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 the little island just like I'm here.
Yeah, it's near, it's, it's.
The one in between like pow, pow and.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they nest facing the shore. They, they waddle up to real close.
They're the same as I spotted last.
Yeah, so the water's not gonna get any higher unless we have a hurricane or something, uh, or a major rain because the water is slowly, slowly, uh, retreating.
I'll give you mine if I do. We'll see.
Scott is coming.
Oh, he is?
Yeah. I'll move my stuff.
I got it.
Oh.
He is?
Yeah, I got it. It's like if they don't come that lake, I'm okay.
I apologize.
Pete, man, no.
He's close, he's almost here.
Oh, yeah.
She sent the, she said I can just get your signature and I can scan it back there.
That should go up in the office.
What, this?
This is for who?
This is for you and me right now, when we, when we do Jeff's thing. Jeff, did they do the farm water study and everything like you did on the one on the.
Stormwater, has it?
Yeah.
Well, not yet.
Okay.
You have his application, right?
Yep. It's six thirty?
It's six thirty-one right now, he's gonna be another minute or two.
All right. Well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. And we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll call.
John Nolan, vice chair here.
Dana K. Lodge here.
Kristi Meehan here.
Dana K. Lodge here.
Okay, any opening remarks?
No.
All right. Preview the minutes from May eleventh and April nineteenth, and actually it's April thirteenth. Okay, so we'll start with the April thirteenth, any comments?
Make a motion, we approve the May thirteenth minutes as transcribed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May eleventh? Any comments on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the May eleventh meeting minutes of twenty twenty-three as transcribed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And this is where we're gonna switch things around a little bit. We are going to discuss impact fees with Mr. Mark Fugier. I pronounced it right, thank you. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark. Hey, yeah, you can pull a chair up, you can stand up any way you want to. Would you like me to give a brief synopsis of who you are, so, or do you wanna do that?
I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll say a few things.
Okay.
So, thank, thank you for coming, uh, thank you for allowing me to come tonight.
Well, thank you.
My name's Mark Fugier, um, a planning consultant from, uh, over in Milford. Um, been working in the state for over thirty years. Uh, I spent eleven years in the private sector as a planner, last working for the city is Nashware, as a deputy planning director. Um, I've worked for some development companies, uh, other private engineers, and I've been on my own consulting for the last twenty-plus years, uh, for both private and public sector communities. Um, I'm a temporary planner for five communities in the state, Leamollis, Greenland, New Bloss and Henniker, uh, and Gilmington on occasion. And one of the things I also do is impact fees. Having done a ton of work because Bruce Maryberry, um, did ninety percent of the jobs here in the state, pretty much owns that racket. Um, Bruce is retired, um, and actually right now we're, my partner and I, um, are engaged in, in a project over Dover where I was this afternoon, updating, uh, their impact fee program, which includes fire, police, school, recreation. I'm also, uh, working on an impact fee for the town of Greenland where I'm a planning consultant, uh, working on their library impact fee. So, um, just, you know, I just did some, uh, basic notes on, on impact fees. I brought some, some handouts if people interested. It's a good way to get to sleep tonight if you have trouble sleeping. Um, it's pretty boring stuff, but basically, impact fees are authorized by state statute six seventy-four twenty-one, which gives the authorization for the community to first adopt an impact fee ordinance, and then, um, based, uh, after you adopt that ordinance, test to go to town meeting, you then, uh, need to come up with some calculations to support the fee. Um, so there's actually a two-step process. Um, and basically a fee, uh, impact fee is an assessment imposed upon development, including subdivision, building construction, or other land use change in order to help meet the needs occasioned by development for the construction of capital facilities, and they include a whole, uh, list of them. Uh, it's not open space, uh, but it's, you know, obviously wastewater plants, schools, fire, uh, town halls, things like that, um, public libraries, uh, recreation facilities. Uh, the amount of such fee shall report a proportional share of the municipal capital improvement costs which are reasonably related to capital needs created by development. So, um, it's not, uh, the ability to collect all the money back from a new, from a project that the town builds, uh, but, uh, you're allowed to collect some of that. There has to be a rational nexus between the fee being charged and the capital improvement, meaning there has to be a relationship. If you have an over fifty-five development age-restricted property, there's not gonna be any kids there, you can't charge a school impact fee. There's no nexus. Uh, there has to be an impact, um, that that project's gonna have on the community in order to, um, charging that type of fee. Uh, towns must have a capital improvement plan in place in order to adopt an impact fee ordinance. Money, um, must be accounted separately and not co-mingled with any other funds or revenues, uh, that's very important. Um, keep funds up to six years, if not extended, they must be returned. Uh, this was actually an issue in Pelham, uh, which was one of my, um, my clients. Uh, they had a fire impact fee program in their community for many years, um, and they were working with an architect, but unfortunately the voters didn't support the station. Uh, they had over eight hundred thousand dollars in that fund, and finally, basically at the last year, um, they passed the law on to build a new fire station and were able to capture that money, or they would've had to start returning that money that was six years old back to either the developer or the homeowner or wherever it came from. So, they ended up getting sued, um, they won in court, uh, because they had followed the statute and, um, returned the, didn't have to return the money, uh, but it just shows that, um, if you don't have a project that's approved by the town, it's a little bit of a risk to adopt a fee in a project that you hope gets by town meeting. Um, if you're like, uh, any other town in the state, most likely, uh, projects don't get approved in one year, maybe they don't get approved the second year or the third year. So, there has to, there should be some sort of strong confidence that whatever project you're gonna have in there, um, is gonna have enough, uh, support in the community. Um, it just makes it less risky. Um, ordinance may include the ability to waive fees for certain uses such as age restricted. Um, must report all revenue yearly, uh, so at the end of the year you have to publish how much money you collected, or what use it was for, uh, and where it's going. Uh, usually goes into the general fund to offset costs that you concur it. If it's for a project that you're hoping to, um, get passed in the future, then that would stay in a separate, uh, account. Um, it's not a panacea. Uh, fee can cover only costs of excess capacity, not all costs are recoverable. If you do a six million dollar bond, for example, for a school project, it's doubtful that all that money is gonna be able to go into the impact fee, or that you're gonna recover all that money. You know, if, if about twenty percent of the project is creating capacity for future growth, for future development that, um, that the classroom's not full, only twenty percent of that bond, of that cost that the town has is gonna be recoverable. So it does help, obviously, but it's not gonna pay for everything, um, unless it's brand-new and it's all for growth, which is typically never the case, um, especially if you're renovating and it's a system building. Um, solid record-keeping is very critical. Uh, town of Hudson got into, uh, a big problem with that. Uh, their record-keeping was horrible, they didn't know where the money was going, uh, they couldn't, uh, didn't have good receipts, um, and they got in trouble, obviously, for, for being sloppy. So, if you're gonna get into this, you need to be very serious about it and make sure someone's watching the books, because people do ask, you start charging, um, the development community and, and residents thousands of dollars in fees, uh, people are gonna wanna know that it's being properly spent and properly accounted for, so it's very important. Um, and monies, uh, impact fee monies can only be spent as authorized by statute. Um, the town of London Derry's running that the hard way. Um, they were spending money on state highways, which, uh, was inferred within statute and couldn't do, but they did it anyway. Um, they lost a huge court case, um, had to return hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, to the development community, um, or the developers who could, uh, submitted the money, submitted the money, um, paid for the money. Um, and the problem with London Derry is the money they owed, they didn't have. So, guess who paid for the?
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers, right. So, again, it's, it's, uh, serious business, um, it's usually, you know, depending on the fee, they can, I've seen impact fees of a couple hundred dollars, uh, the school impact fee in Dover is sixty-five hundred dollars for a single-family home. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, their total fee for all their four fees, I think, is close to nine thousand dollars, uh, for the single-family home, and that's to cover police, fire, recreation, and schools. So it's a lot of money, um, obviously every community's different, every community has different costs, different demands for services, um, but, you know, that gives you an idea of the scale and why people, you know, who start charging that, they take a hard look at what's going on. And, uh, so, um, I know it's something the board's been talking about, um, so if you're interested, we can certainly, um, get into that a little bit, uh, if you have to answer any questions you may have. Um, I noticed in the capital improvements plan, um, you do have a relatively new school that's not at capacity, so there may be an opportunity there to do an impact fee. Um, I'm assuming you're still paying the bond on that, and, uh, you know, there may be other things in the community, uh, that, uh, that you need help with or, you know, wanna get some money back on the side.
How many more do you guys we're talking about?
I got, I got a question. Um, we have been doing a lot of research, or a lot of discussion about this, and one of the things that, uh, I don't know if I've seen this in other communities or not, uh, can you have an impact fee ordinance without a, a calculation of the mythology? Can you put in your ordinance saying upon?
Yes. Yeah.
And how, you, in other words, uh, we don't know what the calculation's gonna be, but we could impose an impact fee on, uh, now, we have to be careful. Can we, would we define where the impact fees, who would be, like a single-family home, a commercial, would, and then we'll decide later as to whether you do that fee, is that what you do?
So what you would do, and we did, we did this a few years ago in Greenland, um, and just this past year have signed a contract for me to do the library, so you, um, you adopt an ordinance that tell me you'd like to do any other zone, it's a zoning ordinance, so you, so you write it up, um, you don't have swimming water here, so you would list, you know, the, the types of projects you think you'd need covered, um, in that document, um, put in the language as far as any type of waivers you'd wanna be able to, to give, uh, details such as that, but no calculation. And that goes to the voters, and if that gets passed, it becomes part of your zoning ordinance, and just sits there, because you haven't calculated the fee. And then, we decide that project comes along, or, you know, the school gets filled and you're gonna have to expand it again, or whatever the case may be, you can then, um, have that fee calculated that doesn't go to town meeting, that's done through the board's selectment adopting as a fee, um, and away you go. So you don't have to wait till March to calculate, to get that approved by the voters, because it's a, it's a creation of a fee.
Okay, the mytho, the, may I?
Go ahead.
Okay, the mythology to calculate that fee, it, it requires a lot of data. I mean, I've looked at some of yours, I've looked at others, and there are pages of, of data, uh, and formulas, uh, several different ways to do it. How would you, uh, who does that? I mean, we don't have the knowledge to do that. Would we?
Well, that's, that's why, that's why you hire me.
That's why I hire you, yeah. So, I, I'm pleased that, uh, we could do an impact fee ordinance without that calculation and then decide, um, if, for example, we have to expand some classrooms at the school or, or, uh, a large development comes into town that may impact infrastructure or the fire department, whatever, whatever it is, then we could calculate that. Now, on a, on a commercial development, could we, we have in our ordinances already that we can impose impact fees, uh, and the developer would pay?
You mean off-site, off-site improvements?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's a negotiated thing and, and that, you know, the fact that you have an impact fee ordinance that don't, that doesn't matter in the statute you're allowed to have, to continue to do that, you don't need an impact fee ordinance, because that's something that, you know, scattered premature, uh, statute addresses that if there's a, a blind intersection because of the big curve, well, if you want your shopping center there, Mr. Developer, you gotta fix that, that intersection because it's unsafe. And if you don't fix it, then you're gonna have to wait till we fix it, and it's on, on the list, but it's eight years away or what have you, so you can still do that. The advantage of having it on the zoning books is, um, you have to impose the fee at a planning board meeting, um, and you wanna be able to have that ordinance in place sooner than later, um, there will be projects at a grandfather that won't have to pay the fee.
Right.
Uh, because it is a zoning ordinance, so the sooner they get the zoning ordinance on, at least it's on the books, like you have to, um, you know, probably at the design review phase, um, at the earliest, because that's where you get vested, um, you'd have to be, notify them that, you know, this project goes forward and the, you know, the home's gonna have to pay X or Y maybe.
Yeah, yeah. So, in this town for the size we are, I know that there's one project that may be coming in, and it's an over fifty-five mobile home park. We also have a capital reserve fund for, um, for a, um, I don't wanna say security complex, for the complex for fire department, police, and everything. Um, how would that affect either one of those, um, projects?
Well, that type of project, um, is going to generate, um, a lot of ambulance calls, uh, so there won't be increased demand services there and police calls.
Right.
So, you know, there won't be any kids coming out of there, um, but.
Need a break.
There'll be, you know, it's definitely gonna put pressure on the emergency services.
Right, absolutely.
That's what I'm seeing, yeah.
So that would be a nexus?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, absolutely. Well, I mean, any development impacts fire and police.
Right.
At, at different degrees, right? So, no matter what it is, that covers every, every, you can't have a land use that doesn't impact that, those two departments.
Absolutely.
Um, school's different, not every, you know, shopping center, you can't charge them an impact fee for schools.
Right.
Right? Um, but obviously police, fire, roads, if you had a road impact fee, uh, shopping center would have to pay, things like that, but, so it depends on the project, um, age-restricted, you know, the developments that I've looked at in the state, um, over a thousand units that I've researched, it's probably two kids in them, you know, it's just, it's very rare.
It comes down to, is it worth impact fees in a town of this size?
I really can't answer.
I mean, you know, you don't have a lot of, you don't have businesses coming in.
Yeah.
We don't have the infrastructure for it.
Well, you haven't had a lot of growth either.
No.
You had a good spurt between two thousand and two thousand ten.
Right.
Went up three hundred and thirty-one people, three thirty-eight, but over the last eleven years, you went up forty.
Yeah.
In the census, you know?
Yeah.
And the building permits, you know, over a ten-year period were nineteen single-family homes, five duplexes and two mobile homes.
You gotta take into consideration too, the year ago, we had more atrium on building here too, so.
Right, well, obviously that's gonna dampen things a little bit if you can't fill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I guess that's really, you know, to go forward or not, that's, well, a decision and, and the voters.
I, I look at this, uh, let's just look at, uh, single-family homes, and you've done a thousand where they have two kids, okay? So if you look at our growth, single-family, new ones, now, our demographics have changed, right, Scott? In other words, seniors are downsizing, moving out, younger families are coming in, they're not new buildings, they're just by an existing building. So the demographics has changed. Um, so, um, so let's say we have, we, we have, right now I know of, I don't know how many projects we got going on, but I see four or five of them where I live, and they're on the lake, and they're, they're, they're basically tear down and replaced, but they're vacation homes. But let's say they were occupied. So let's say we do a three thousand dollar impact fee for the school. So, that is, uh, about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars that we would raise, right? And that would go to capital improvements for the school, right?
If, 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 let's say the, if, um, there's, if, there's years left in the bond, which I assume there is, you probably did at least a twenty-year bond.
Fifteen left.
It's a fifteen years left on that bond, so that money, if it's a school impact fee, that money come into the general fund and be directed to offset and pay that bond.
The existing bond.
The existing bond.
Okay. So, as far as commercial development, um, we only have, what, three large businesses, which are right on the corner here. So, there have been proposals for, well, the proposed mobile home park is a commercial venture, there was another commercial venture proposed, uh, uh, down the road here, twenty units, I think, whatever it was, uh, retail and rental units up above. Um, is it, is it worth the, um, administrative accountability?
That was, word, the question wrong, you're right, go ahead.
Accountability, because it seems to me, in what you're talking, you know, Hudson is no small town.
No, it's, it's over.
And they have staff to do a lot of things.
Yeah.
We are on a teeny-weeny budget and staff here, so, and it changes. So is it worth it? If we, now, we're not gonna be collecting lots of money.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna collect three, four hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, that'd be one thing, but you're, you know.
That's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen, it's, it's gonna be, you know.
Three, four hundred dollars maybe?
Yeah, well, a check, a check every, you know, a couple times a month, maybe. So it's not, you know, from that standpoint, it's just basic accounting, just keeping track of the funds, you know?
I've seen, I've seen towns that have a simple spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It's, it's not difficult.
No.
You could copy that spreadsheet, actually.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that issue, because I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's that complicated. Why Hudson made it complicated is.
Record-keeping.
It's, you know, it's beyond me, but whatever. Um, you know, it's not hard to do. Um, we did it, you know, Milford was one of the first towns in the state to charge impact fees after the statute was adopted back in the early nineties, and it's not, you know, we didn't have big staff. You know, that's, I would not do it because of that. I mean, you gotta have a good project, and, you know. So.
Still something to look at.
Yeah, I mean, adopting the ordinance is.
The biggest thing.
Yeah, the regional planning commission can help you with that, I mean, it's simple.
Yeah.
There's fifty of them online that are adopted. Get one, steal it, make it, make it your own and.
Yeah, I think for Farmington, I think Farmington had, I know Farmington has one, which is our next town down.
Yeah.
But I, I'm told they don't impose it.
Right.
Unless, now, they have a lot of community development there, uh, but I've seen, uh, like you said, ordinance is all over the place. It's funny, uh, in terms of, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, there are about eighty-eight towns or municipalities that have impact fees in the state out of two hundred and fifty towns. Eighty percent of them are south of Concord.
Yeah.
And we're surrounded, our little twenty-two square foot town is surrounded by impact fees all over the place.
Yes, I mean, having, you know, with Henniker, they, um, they adopted no ordinance in the fee number of years ago, um, they paid off the school bond, um, they got rid of the fees, but we left the ordinance, the ordinance is still on the books. And, you know, things pick up again and some issue develops and, you know, we can re-adopt the fee program. So, you know, having it on the books sort of protects you, and if you never use it, so what? You know, it's there, it's not gonna hurt anything, it takes up four pages, you know?
So, you don't need to answer this, but I'd like you to, and I'm not holding you to anything here, because you know what I'm gonna ask you. So if we hire a consultant to do the formula and the calculation, there's a lot of things that you need from the town and so forth and so on, what would be the range of the fee to do that? Putting you on the spot, Mark.
What, uh, what, what's the impact fee? Is it one, is it schools, is it library, is it roads?
It would be primarily, well, basic.
School, fire, and police?
School, fire, and police.
Well, I'm, I'm doing, this is all public information, so, um, we're doing the library, I'm doing a library impact fee for, for Greenland right now, that's sixty-five hundred dollars, and a contract with Dover is thirty thousand for four. For police, fire, schools.
Okay.
And recreation.
Okay.
Um, it's a, you know, pretty complicated situation over there.
Right, that, that helps. Yeah, so we would, yeah, okay. Does anybody?
I have, have you seen other towns that are small like us, and instead of doing impact fees, have they chose like alternative means of?
Oh, yeah.
Like, is there other options, I guess?
The only other option that you're allowed to do is negotiate an off-site improvement or some sort of, or an exaction, you know, um, on a case-by-case basis. You know, we used to beat up developers in Nashware for sidewalk money, but don't ask me what the formula was, it's whatever my boss came up with, you know, and they, they paid it, you know, but it's, it's, that's a negotiated thing and you can get, you know, and there's no real math, it's, you know, so that's the only other real option you have. So that's the only other real option you have on a case-by-case basis.
Another.
Try to get whatever you can get, obviously, there needs to be a situation where it's, you can point to, you know? I mean, if it's an intersection that's gonna get improved, or you're planning on improving it, and it's in your capital improvements plan, and you're gonna go to town meeting with it, and this ten-lot subdivision's down the street, they're gonna add to that intersection, you know, negotiating, hey, you know, can you help us? You know, with this intersection, it's gonna cost a hundred grand, you know? Sit down and figure it out.
What's your, we talked a little bit about this on the phone, growth management. I've seen a couple of communities have both an impact fee, ordinance and a growth management fee. Growth management fee takes a different approach, right?
Well, it's not a fee, it's, it's restriction on permits.
Yeah.
Um, that has to be backed up by, you know, well, strong statistics that you're being harmed in some way, because you can't, there's no water, there's no sewer, uh, the schools are at capacity, that's what Brookline did last year. The elementary school was getting, um, ramped up with, with too many, too many kids. They passed a year more term on permits, so they can figure out what they needed to do. So you can do that, but it's, it's a temporary situation, and if you're gonna have a growth management on it, it's the last number of years, the town has to be committed to whatever that problem is that you're concerned about or the issue is, school, police, fire, whatever, you need to be actively trying to fix it. So you can't just pass it.
And sit on it.
And sit on it and say, all right, well, you know, we don't want any growth, so we're just gonna pretend there's not, there's an issue here, but we're not gonna do anything about it, and we're not gonna go to town meeting and try to fix it. I mean, you gotta be, you know, you're looking for a lawsuit if that happens.
So say you, you put a, a restriction on building permits to twelve a year, say, but then you got the Mobile Home Park moving in that wants to put in seventy-five homes. I don't think they'll get that high, but that's okay. How do you handle that?
Well, if you have a GMO that says twelve, they can only have twelve. You know? I mean, during the approval process for that project, you can also do phasing, that's allowed by statute.
Yep.
So again, if there's gonna be an impact to a particular service EMS, for example, say, hey, you know, we can't, we can't, you know, add seventy units here in two years, you know, we, we don't have the, we can't, we, we need time to, to get ready, so we want you to do it over five, or, you know, whatever works for you.
What about bonds versus impact fees?
Bonds?
Having, you know, you have a contract, say, like the Mobile Home Park or the Safety Complex, you, you'll impose an impact fee, not an impact fee of bond, that, you know, it's a certain percentage of the total cost of the project. How does that work?
Well, if you're looking to have security for development, um, usually that's to protect something that you're concerned about, it's gonna be town roads.
Yep.
You can, um, you can bond that.
Okay.
Because it's, it's, it's gonna ultimately be a town road, and you wanna make sure it's built properly.
Right.
And you can, um, you know, call it if, if they don't, if they screw up, or, you know, if they're, if they walk and people's living there and you need to get it fixed. So that's when you wanna bond some sort of security to make sure, um, that's taken care of. I mean, you typically require at a minimum some sort of site security for erosion control and stabilization, just in case something happens to any development. So it can be a really small bond, or, you know, obviously, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if it's a big, uh, big development, it's gonna be municipal, municipal roads.
Okay.
Anybody?
No, go ahead.
Anybody in the audience have questions for Mark on impact fees or?
I know most of you guys are here for other things, cowboy. Uh, building inspector?
Hi, so if someone's expanding upon a property, not just building a new building, if they're changing a house, say, a one-bedroom to a three-bedroom, is that something that is imposed in an ordinance, or, does that have an impact on the community as well, if they now have a capacity of possibly having more in that house than they had before?
Yeah, you can, uh, same piece, based on per square foot, for that type of situation. So if they went from a one-bedroom.
So it's still under a single-family and then it goes to a three-bedroom, and it's just, well, would they add a square foot?
Right.
And what's out, like, so you mentioned that you can't say having impact fee, like a fifty-five-year-old, like, you, whatever.
You can.
But for schools.
For schools, right.
Um, so what if we say went to the, we need to, um, we need to have the, I'm trying to remember, you guys, sorry. Um, and basically just, how do you ask these people that in a legal manner, say, hey, are you gonna be having kids?
Well, we could.
You know, because it's like you're kind of segregating somebody, saying, is there gonna be children involved, is there not gonna be children involved?
When the application comes to this board, that's where those questions get asked.
But sometimes those things don't come to the planning board, it's left to the building inspector.
Well, I think, I mean, you're referring to an old fifty-five building, right?
Regardless of the business, you know, like, like last year, we had ordinance, I mean, not ordinance, say, uh.
Moratorium.
Moratorium. And, you know, when we were doing stuff, they went about it as if you were gonna be having an impact on the school that you couldn't build. But realistically, that's not really something we should be asking, because it's just leaving yourself open for a le-legal issue, or someone saying, hey, are you gonna have kids?
Yeah, I mean, if, that would only imply it's a, a development that comes in and is getting, um, approved as a project that's over fifty-five.
Right.
If you have a building lot and I come into the building permit and say, yeah, I'm over fifty-five, um, I'm exempt from the school impact fees, I don't have kids, like, no, you have to pay the fee.
So that just has to be language in the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you, you pay the fee, and because that's, that's just, because that person gets out and another person to build out, you could just be blowing, blowing smoke. The only place it would be is, I don't know if you have an over fifty-five ordinance, um, or if it got approved by this board with a restriction that the occupants, all occupants must be fifty-five or older, that would be part of the approval, and it would, you know, guarantee for the most part, you know? That that's what has to be, you know?
See, during the moratorium locale, we had that right, because Pete, we weren't stopping all buildings, we were stopping building that would make, would suffer the school. And that was built into the moratorium, that was the reason for the moratorium was for the school.
I saw complaints from the developers.
Right.
Stating that they felt that it was kind of intrusive.
Yeah, yeah, moratorium hits people pretty wild up.
Yeah, I have no idea what it is.
People were pretty good, and I'll tell you, after the moratorium, I expected to see a line go on halfway down the highway, and it wasn't that way at all. So. Anything else?
Anybody? Well, good, Mark, I wanna thank you for.
You're welcome.
Yes, you're welcome.
All the way from Milford, and, uh, we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to give us a little insight on the impact.
My pleasure.
So, uh, you can start without me or have a little recess while I.
You wanna call a five-minute recess?
I do, may I, yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, nice to be talking.
Thank you, very nice.
And then you're up, Jeff.
Okay.
That was quick.
Well, thank you.
Goodbye. Only say it one way.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, he's, um, he's got a, his credentials are pretty, pretty impressive. I had talked to him a couple of times, and, uh, but he was, uh, nice to come all the way out here.
Absolutely.
So that just kinda helps us figure out what you, what you're gonna think of. And, uh, that's, that's the checklist for the subdivision.
Oh, okay.
You're good, you're good, Tom.
I what?
You have the command.
I do, huh? Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Are you guys gonna do the checklist first, or you want me to do something else?
Uh, where's the application?
I can present it first, yeah.
That might take a little bit, Jeff.
Okay. So on that plan, you're opening, go by that, go by this plan right here.
Right here.
Not that one?
Yeah.
This is the original.
Yeah. We, uh, we, we went down by one lot, only gonna be seven.
All right.
I'm John Sir. Okay, my name's Jeff Hurtel, I'm here for a subdivision that my uncle of the Rayad Hurtel Family Trust is looking to do on Pinkham Road. It was originally gonna be an eight-lot subdivision, it's a total of fifty-three acres. We went out and had all the wetlands marked and flagged, and due to that, we've shrunk the subdivision down to seven, seven lots instead of eight. Just to allow for, um, more reasonable building areas for people when they, when they choose to purchase the lots. So, uh, the plan that's in front of you, uh, I do have a topo plan with me as well, but it gets pretty involved when you put topo lines on this, so I gave you this just so it's easier to look at. Basically, um, if you start, um, on, that would be, let's see, on the southern side of Pinkham Road, on the southern end, we have parcel A, which is three point one, two acres, which is off of, is it, how do you pronounce that?
Owen Way.
Owen, Owen Way. The butter, Megan Wellman is looking to purchase that, and so we made a note on the plan that that parcel A is to become part of, um, map eight, lot forty-six dash one. So we're not creating a new lot, it's gonna be merged with her lot. That's my understanding of it, that's what I was told?
Note four or note five? Oh, okay, I got you, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And then as we, as we move north on Pinkham Road, we're proposing a five-point-two acre lot, a five-acre lot, a fifteen-acre lot, ten, five, five and five. Uh, that's basically how the lots break down in size. Other than, uh, Megan's lot, all the lots will have, uh, access off of Pinkham Road. And, uh, I do believe Van met with the road agent today. And went over that, uh, possible driveway areas.
So lot six, is that a buildable lot there?
Which one, tax map eight, lot six?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this, this, this lot here?
Yeah, this is all good soils in here, this is all good soils in here.
Oh, this is.
This is just, this is the wet in here, and this is the setback lines.
Oh, okay.
The red are the setback lines.
Setback lines, okay, and that's fifteen, that's a pretty good-sized park.
Yeah, it's a fifteen-acre lot, so there should be two possible building sites.
And this, this is where the culvert is.
Culvert is, yeah, collapse, yeah, yeah.
Or, or, collapsing.
Collapsing, right.
Okay, okay, good enough, I'm with you, all right.
That's, uh, pretty much what we're looking to do, pretty minor.
You wanna open the hearing, or what do you want?
Do you wanna go over the checklist first?
Sure, we can do that.
I'll have you do the checklist, then I'll open it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna let everybody know that's what we're gonna do.
All right, we're gonna do the checklist for this, and then after we through with that, we'll open it for questions.
Checklist, oh, that's a major, I don't wanna major. Okay. Okay, the application.
You got it right there?
Oh, right there, okay. Okay, signed application, it is signed?
Yep.
Okay.
You thought it was all modified?
Hey, wait a minute, there are five eleven-by-seventeen copies, do we have, we have five of those, right?
Yeah, there's five of these.
I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, can, can I just ask for clarification? Are we talking about coming in on Pinkham, are we talking about the left hand or the right hand?
The left hand, the left hand, yeah.
The left hand, we have brought in the right hand.
The right hand is.
We're just on a pre-apple, not real quick, one on top.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, uh, did, are you able to provide us with a PDF instead of six twenty-four by thirty's?
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
You had that? No.
Uh, no, but I can.
Okay.
I can, I can tomorrow, just tell him to email it to.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's easier than.
No problem. A lot of towns are doing PDFs now.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is put all documents online.
Sure.
So that everybody can see them online, so.
I'll get you the topo plan and the regular plan.
So you want to send it to Carol, so she can have it online? Or to Robin?
Send it to Robin, because she's assessing.
I'll get your email.
And then we'll have Carol put it however that's gonna get online. And that, that will be basically this thing here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, did your, this isn't on the checklist, but I wanna make sure, did, are you sure you got all the drawings so that they can get into Stratford Regional?
No, but not, not necessarily right off the bat like this.
Okay.
But Lynn, Lynn, Lynn and I have a.
A relationship.
Relationship.
We have a good working relationship.
She told me what to do and make it a life long.
It's not, it's not a.
Yeah, she's off, she's straight down.
Yeah, she'll help you a lot.
Yeah.
She doesn't, she'll, well, she'll work with you, thanks, yeah, okay. Name and address, which is on there, okay, this is, okay, I got that, that's here, phone number, we got that. Okay, let's see, name and address, name and address and signature of the owner, record if it's different from the applicant, which it is not. Okay, name of, representative, that's you. And preparing the phone, yep, name of record. Name and address of the budding property owners, we have that.
Yeah, I have your brothers over there.
Okay. North arrow on the plan.
Yep, oh, magnetic, yeah.
Yep. Plan to scale, or as so noted it is. Date prepared, it's on there.
Yep.
Locust map showing the general location of the site with the town.
Okay.
Upper right-hand corner, property boundary lines, inclusive distance angles pointed scale, yep. Areas proposed, lots, square feet and acres, absolutely, this delineation of wetlands, that's on there. Okay, um, let's see here, delineation of slopes, that's on that other one that.
It's on the topo map?
That's.
The soils are on this one, and I do believe that the last one of the soils you represent is slope, slope is a lot.
Location all road within two hundred feet, yep. Existing access, recreation, boundary, stone wall, barbed wire. I don't know if there's any stone walls on there, I don't think, I don't think there is.
If there are, it'd be little holes.
Yeah, yeah, on the other property, there is, there is a burial site, you know, you know about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Existing proposed buildings and driveways.
No.
Because you don't know yet, okay, so that. Because you don't know yet, okay, so that's. Current zoning classification of prior location. Location, let's see, current zoning classification of prior location, there's two more zones, it's not, it's one zone, it's not two more.
Yep.
Is that on there somewhere?
Uh, yeah, zoning, yep, number three.
Yep, it's on there.
Okay, good. Location setbacks required, additional buildings, onsite flow of traffic, there's no driveway. Yep, okay. All existing proposed services such as waters, sewer, water, and utilities. Okay, note defining the purpose of the plan, probably does somewhere.
It said the purposes too.
Subdivision.
Yep.
Okay, brief history of the property, including other disturbances, did you? Did you do that one on the other one there? No. Brief history of the property. Okay. General description of existing characteristics such as developed product farmland, forest land, viewed acreage, okay, area contiguous with other open space, wildland quarters, there's none of that. Summary of description of drainage upstream on the property, you have delineated that, correct? That's it, right there.
My understanding, yes.
Yeah.
What's on there is what's out there.
On that section of property, yeah, because there's, on Pinkham, there is, I saw yesterday, yesterday? There's like six, seven culverts on that road. Okay. Flood hazard information, uh, is provided for performance of a crime with special flood hazard area, that's not a flood hazard area. Note reference and delineation on the plan of all easements right away, that would've been on there if you had any, and if none. State of New Hampshire, alteration of terrain not required because you're not altering, you're forced, all partials shall be numbered sequentially, which you have. Planning board approval block for the space for the chairs and signature and approval date. That should be. Is that it?
No. That's for Paul Zuzdo.
Is the.
I just, I just signed it.
Okay, okay, uh, let me make a note.
None of them, do you have one?
We can add, I mean, that's no problem.
Yeah, might, might be, it might be, I mean, we've done it in the past by signing the prints.
Yeah.
Okay, but it might be feasible next time, just add it, add it on the print. Okay, seal of the duly registered license.
He's over there.
Okay. Approval of waivers, waivers or brief general description of the waiver, there's no waivers, okay. According to my checklist, the only question mark I had was the history of the property and other disturbance that might have happened on the property. I don't see a problem with that. Anybody see a problem with that?
No.
Okay, we call that clear. All right, his application is complete, let me, let's just take a look at this again. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve. Twelve of fudders. All the fees were taken care of, there's the check. Okay, I guess we're good. Uh, let me, let me fill out this thing here. Subdivision application, I had that. Let me, okay, you can start the hearing, you can go on to, I'm gonna just fill this stuff out.
Questions?
Would you mind being.
Please, can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tiberi, I live on Pinkham Road.
Okay.
Could you, um, state again the person who owns the lot?
Sure, absolutely.
Did you talk to the best academic?
Sure, so we're gonna have a starting on the southern end of Pinkham Road, we, there will be a three acre lot that is getting added to Megan's piece, which she's occupied.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's parcel A.
I know.
Then the following, the lot that corners Owen and Pinkham is five point two acres. The next one is five point zero four. Fifteen point zero two. Ten point zero five. Five point zero three. Five point zero two. And five point zero five.
And that's, just called the seven?
Yep, yep.
Anybody else?
Will you be started the hearing or keep it open for thirty minutes?
Actually, I didn't.
Well.
Okay, we're opening the public hearing, it would've been at seven fifteen, because I already started taking questions, so. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one more, yeah, the three acres to Megan, how far in does that go? That's Megan, by the way.
Hi, Megan, nice to meet you, we've been talking about you all night. You sat over there so quietly.
Can you repeat that question, please? Uh, the land that Megan is purchasing.
Yep.
About her property.
Yep.
Uh, how far in, it's three acres, but how far in does it go, just like three acres, this way?
This is the lot, this is the lot right here, Judy. Right here, this is.
Okay, got it.
So it's, it's, it's about as deep as the back corner of our first lot, six thousand one, yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're gonna remain open for thirty minutes, yeah?
I know that.
Oh, okay, well, do you have anything else?
Actually, we can, Chuck called me last, last week and asked if we could use some help going over the zoning ordinances.
Absolutely. You're, you're chair of the zoning board, right?
Yeah, I think we have to help with people, get a committee together, start, there's a lot of flipping ones in there, and she said she had about fifty sticky notes on it.
One fifty, that's okay.
Probably.
Well, any, any, for example, the, the building inspector, if you see zoning ordinances that you are, have, I don't say issues, but you see can, can cause difficulties or need to be changed or modified or additions, the same thing with the ZBA, if you run in, if you run into issue, run into issues like that, fine. The, the board has decided to have work sessions in between our regular meetings, and we're gonna have them at night. We were handling them on Saturdays, but most of us don't like to give up our Saturdays. So, they will be posted, and we will have them at six thirty and go whenever we gotta go. So, um, when we did the zoning order, ordinances before, we spent an awful, we started on page one and just went through them, and, uh, yeah, well, there were some errors in there, obviously, there's still, but those need to be checked, but we have, uh, we have to, the, the, in my view, our most, uh, important ordinance is, is the impact fee, whether we're, or some kind of growth, um, management type of ordinance somewhere, that's the most important one. The rest of them, um, they'd be little things, but the ordinance for impact fees, whether we use them or not, would be the most important one. We did approve last week, or last, last meeting, an updated ordinance on the Aqua Fur.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, it's just boilerplate stuff from the state, but that has to go before the town. And we have the board, any zoning ordinance change, modification, even a spelling change, has to go before the town for town meeting, and we have a clock. Each one of those changes, additions, has to have a hearing before the public to explain what those changes and additions or deletions are. And they start sometime in November, I think, is when they start, so we, you think we have a lot of time, we don't.
That's why one, that's where I was coming from, I didn't know if you wanted to do that at your work sessions, or get another committee together to do it first and then.
Get your group together and start going through the book, and if you find something that doesn't sound like, list the ordinance and what you think.
Or you need to add something, so.
Yeah, if you think that there's something wrong with it, put your note in there.
Yeah, the more, the more input we have, the better, that's gonna be easier for us to do that.
When is your next work session?
I just got to that.
But it'll be in between, well.
Our next meeting is May eighth, excuse me, June eighth.
So it, it probably won't be.
A couple of Thurs, we, we'll be doing them on Thursday nights, because nobody takes this hall on Thursdays. Usually.
They do differ.
Okay.
Well.
What Thursday night do you, you should take it?
Okay. Well, we, we will work it out, I guess, uh, our next. Our next meeting is May, uh, June eighth, so I would say twenty second of June. Or if, if it's, if you've already booked that, or there's a conflict, or whatever, we can, we can move around.
I'll find out from Carol when you want.
I have booked it, but if you need it, we can probably switch something.
Well, how many, okay, we could have this many people at those meetings, or we could have?
We don't have that many, so we can like sit up in the kitchen or over there or something.
Okay. Okay, we'll work it out, yeah, okay. So it'd be June twenty second be the first one, and that, that may be a long one because of the impact fee scenario. And I have, I did do some research for the board on impact fees, and basically, it's a, it's a report of data across the state, which includes who has impact fees, what's the relationship to towns that are same size, growth rates, school size, town budget, school budget, they're all, there's data in there all over the place. And there's a brief summary, which is basically an opinion of mine in there, but there's a lot of data in there that will, along with what Mark shared with us tonight in terms of how to do things. The most important thing that, that I saw him explain to us was the ability to, to get a, an impact fee ordinance in place, and that's what he reiterated out there. You don't have to do the calculation. There are not too many people who, in the state, that do that type of work. Some regional planning offices do that, but ours does not. And it doesn't be, because I've asked Gen Z over there if she can, she doesn't have the expertise or the staff, so she doesn't do it. But other regional planning, uh, commissions do have the staff to do that now, whether they would do it outside, their commission don't know. That would, that would save a lot of money. But I've heard fees to do an ordinance, like he was talking about, remember, he's doing four, probably pretty good sized projects for the library, it's not gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar library agreement, I think it's gonna be a biggie. But I've heard fees, uh, anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars for somebody to do that.
To put the ordinance together?
Not just the ordinance, the most, you can get, you can go out and copy ordinances from other communities all over the place, and they're all good. You just plagiarize those, fine tune them to your own particular situation. It's the calculation, the method, and the accumulation of data.
Is that needed to like back it up and challenge?
Oh, you back, yeah, the reason, you're, yeah, you need, you need to do the count, provide the data that you use to develop the formula, a how to assign three thousand dollars for a single family home, two thousand dollars for an expansion over two hundred square, two thousand square feet, whatever it is. So that you, you won't be sued or questioned or challenged by a homeowner or a property owner, commercial or otherwise, how did you calculate that fee? And sometimes those calculations, a lot of them are based on growth, but they're not up, they're supposed to be updated, I don't know how many, over how many years, I'm not sure, but they're supposed to be updated on a regular basis, it could be ten years or whatever, and you see a lot of impact fees out there that are.
I read the update, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember what it is.
Less than ten years.
Yeah, probably less than ten years. I asked the question about, um, the accountability scenario. Towns such as Londonderry, Dover, are twenty times bigger than we are, and their projects are huge. We wouldn't have that, so accountability, there's spreadsheets out there, you can just, you just have to have somebody within the town or a system within the town that if whoever's assigned to do that leaves, somebody just needs to come in and put, you know, the system and, and the way to do it is already there.
Londonderry lost a lot of money, they were charged with producing the subdivision, oh, they had paid a lot of developers a lot of money back down.
Well, the difficulty is.
They didn't update their, their thing, and then it got old and they bought.
So the difficulty becomes, if you have a resident that built a, and we have a resident on Sunrise Lake that built a million and a half dollar piece of property, or a million dollar piece of property, he was only there for two years, so what if we had charged impact fees and he leaves? We don't know where it goes, we're, how do we find? I, I, maybe there's a stipulation in the ordinance, say, if you leave with it before the project, you gotta tell us where you are, or you relinquish, you lose the fee if you go. So, I better shut up.
But it's not, it's not as simple as even Mark makes it, your bookkeeping spells me out, I have to go far and beyond. I mean, I've been talking to Carol, and both of us are school accountants and bookkeepers, and I wouldn't wanna handle, for this town, maybe. If you're talking to a town like Dover, I would not wanna be part of that, because it's not as easy as it seems.
You have that full-time people, and.
Yes, and, and in this case, it wouldn't be worth it for us.
Well, no, it depends, how many building permits do we get a year of the impact fees we're possibly generating, I don't think you generate enough to pay.
Right.
Well, that's the thing, if, if you, now, on the impact fee, the one that's in charge of the impact fee is the treasurer. So you have to have somebody that is understanding of computers somewhat and spreadsheets. And then you gotta have a check and balance, who checks that, so I guess the planning board would be one that would check that, I guess, I don't know yet.
You gotta have the knowledge.
You gotta have the knowledge to do that, and not, not sophisticated like Dover or Manchester or Nashville, I thought, you know, we would not be collecting a lot of money.
Well, it'd be nice to have, you know, because Carol has a lot of information, so we can all work together.
Well, you'd be surprised how much information I have in that report, that you can get from the state in terms of, and the office of.
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning, whatever the heck that place is up there. There's a lot of information, it's current, most of it's of twenty twenty-two, talks about growth rate, building permits, if they're, which they, I'm sure they're reported, I guess, I don't know, if they're reported or not.
They legally have to report.
Yeah, okay, so they are, so they're in the system, education cost, pupil growth, cost per pupil, all that stuff is up there, so, and then your cap, your capital improvement, you gotta have some plan in place, that's what the master plan and the capital improvement plan is for, to put down, okay, we're gonna need two more classrooms. And we're gonna need them right now, we're not over capacity, but we're, we're over capacity in second and third grade, I, I don't know if that's, I'm just pulling that out of the air, whatever, I don't know.
It might be pretty close on that one.
Okay, so, so in that case, uh, you know, you have to have a specific. Okay, so, so in that case, you know, you have to have a specific, are you gonna do it? Now, things change, like Pelham, it took them a few years to, to vote in the fire station. Same thing with Milton, how many, how many votes did that take to get that, that thing done?
Couple sessions.
More than a couple. That took a few, even with donated property. And they were gonna lose that property if they hadn't, and they finally did, voted in. So, you know.
Well, if you have the data, then you can work and see how many, over the last 10 years, building permits you had, there are really big growth areas, see if it's worth trying to put that in.
Now, if you had somebody that had, the formulas are published on these ordinances. I wouldn't want to be responsible for, because I don't have the knowledge to do it, and I don't, maybe somebody in this town would have the knowledge to do that, but it's gathering, I mean, these, they have four, and then per square foot, and number of people per this and that, and all this other kind of stuff. Some, some towns do it per structure, some do it per square feet.
And that's the new buildings, I don't know how they do it now that I know. When we were gonna buy a piece of land a few years back and build down there, there was a $2,500 non-refundable impact fee to us.
Non-refundable.
And they can't do that.
No.
I don't know if they could back then, but I know they can't now, it can't be non-refundable.
I think you just have to justify the seller for the town.
Well, that would be a waiver, that would request a, provide a waiver. Non-refundable, if you don't, if you don't build in six years? Because how long does a building permit last, two?
It can last up to two years.
Up to two, then you can get an extension, right?
But you have to have it.
You have to have a good reason as to why you did not complete it within a year. You have to start within six months.
And you have to have a certain amount of done, don't you?
There isn't a percentage done, it just has to be progression that happens.
So what if, what if you can't get a contractor? Too bad.
That's kind of just how it is.
Okay.
Just, that's how it is.
Just throw it out there.
There's timelines.
Okay.
So if you only have eight or 10 building permits, and you're charging $2,000, $2,500, it costs you 30 grand to do this thing?
Well, one time.
One time paper.
One time.
Right, but then you have your administration, which is gonna be 20, 30,000 a year.
Maybe, maybe.
If you only have even 20 building permits, if you're spending as much to administer it as you're gonna collect.
Well, it's like, it's like, it would be like an upfront expense.
You're also comparing that to Dover.
Yes, yeah, it couldn't, it could be a lot less than, I put him on a tough spot to.
Like, I understand that, you know, it's gonna be similar in the fashion, but it's gonna be also fractional in that as well, to the extent of what it would need to encompass.
So you know what he was saying when I asked about like alternatives? And he said, kind of like negotiate with the person.
The developer.
The developer.
For offsite.
So he was talking kind of about like roads and stuff, but I'm thinking like, if it was, you know, a 55 plus community where it potentially could greatly affect EMS services, could you negotiate that as well?
I think that's what he was leading with.
No, he was really talking, he said offsite.
You already have the ability to negotiate. That's what he would say, you already have that capacity without.
So, and if we did negotiate something like that, would there be a timeframe? Or that, would there be a timeframe, like if we collected that money?
Yeah, you could, I believe, when you do a site plan, like a minor or this, a major subdivision, you can negotiate with the developer, per our ordinances, improvements to infrastructure and so forth. I mean, you know well about that. So, yeah, you can put those in the requirements of the development along with the site plan. That's a negotiation between you and the developer. Like, we can say, okay, you gotta have a road study, a traffic study. If it determines that there's gonna be X number of cars, and you're gonna have to help us improve the road, blah, 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 blah. That's kind of like an impact fee, kind of.
Right, so if we were to say, you know, somebody were to come in and do a development, and we said, you know, we would need 20,000 for fire and EMS, would we have a timestamp of when we would have to use that money, or could we put it in there?
At like a capital reserve fund? I would say that the developer wouldn't, you know, that's kind of a fuzzy way to get some money into a capital reserve, but you would have to spend it, and, well, there, you can, you can do that.
You can't put it in the capital reserve.
You can't?
No.
Why not?
Because capital reserve is specific, and there's already money going into that capital reserve.
Yeah, but what if you, what if you develop a new capital reserve? And you can do it for, I read you could do capital reserves for, but you can do it for infrastructure. Okay, we do it all the time, okay? The, the easy way out of that, though, is you put it in the capital reserve, okay, for roads. And then the project doesn't go forward. So the capital reserve is already there, and it's specific that we have to do an improvement road on.
Pinkham.
Pinkham, there, okay, good. We had to jump in there, Jeff, that's good. So they have to do a Pinkham improvement, okay? So it, the development doesn't go through, so we got that capital reserve there. We can change that with a town vote, right? We can change the purpose, right? Yeah?
You just need more.
We put a warrant article and say, change the purpose, pull the funds out, we want to put it into the highway.
Except that, are you talking impact fees now?
No, 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 I'm talking about a cap, we, if we put a capital reserve in, we can negotiate with a developer, like Jeff, and say, he's gotta put a four lane highway with, with lights and flashers on Pinkham because of his development down there, and we need $50,000 in that capital reserve. And he doesn't do it because I can't do it, I can't afford it, and you're done. So then the money sits there, because it's specifically set up to do the highway. And then he doesn't do it, well, it's gonna sit there, because the only way we can spend that money is to, to.
To do the develop.
To do the develop.
That would be considered an offsite negotiation for the highway only, it can't be changed.
It would have to be returned back to.
It would have to be.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
So I guess what I was asking is like, is there like a timestamp, just like the impact fee? Because if that's the case, then.
Yeah, but it's shorter.
If it's short.
It's short, lot shorter. You can say, okay, I want it done in one year, or, or phases. You do a phase one, phase two, phase three, and a phase, your, your project has to be completed with X number of years, months, whatever it is, right? I believe that's the way to.
I'm not sure you put it in the capital reserve.
Well, maybe not, but capital reserves are not cast in concrete, you just vote them out and change it. Everybody thinks they're cast in concrete, no. Somebody has to get 25 signatures.
When it's town money that you're talking, right.
You can go and petition that I want capital reserve out of the highway fund, highway garage, and I want to put it into a library. If I get 25 signatures and it's voted in, over she goes. That's the law.
If it wouldn't be a capital reserve, it would just be a fund set up.
Yeah, yeah, the same thing.
It would be, like she said, it wouldn't be a capital reserve. It would be an escrow fund that would be set up for his project.
But it would be specific for.
For that.
And then there would be a timestamp where they would have to give.
Right.
Just like getting other.
So you, there would still have to be somebody that would have to keep track.
Yeah.
Right, there is administration to all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have that ability at the moment.
Not sure, there we do. Nope, no, and we just don't. Half hour is up.
Are we through, no questions for the, for the Pinkham Road development? We all set with it?
Can I have two seconds for you, discussion? So my name's Jeff.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, are you gonna talk about the other one?
No.
Thought we were done with this one.
Oh, well.
Yeah, we are.
This is just a pre-op discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, give me a minute to close out the public hearing. That's why I wanted to know, does anybody have any questions on this? All set? All right, then I'm closing the public hearing at 7:45. Go for it, Jeff.
So, on the other side of Pinkham Road.
Oh, yes.
This is only preliminary.
This is just a pre-op discussion.
This is, this is my proposal.
There you go. We're gonna have an amusement park up there.
Here you go, sir.
That would draw a lot of vacationers.
Okay, so this is a.
At this point is a simple one.
That's what you're saying.
So this is, on the westerly side of Pinkham Road, if you're coming in from King's Highway, it's on the right hand side, it's approximately 130 acres that we own there. And we're proposing a four lot subdivision at this time. Starting on the southerly end of Pinkham Road, again, we'd have a 29 acre lot. The next lot would be a 12 acre, almost 12 and 3/4 acre lot. Then there'd be a 20 acre lot, and then the remaining acreage of, just about 52 acres would remain as it is at this time.
Okay, pack it down, how much is the second lot?
12. Oh, the second lot, I'm sorry, 16, 16, and I'm sorry, I missed that one, and then 12, then the 20.
No, you said it was more land than that, and I'm saying, wait a minute, that's not what this says.
Okay.
Okay.
So same, same subdivide and.
Same scenario.
Same scenario.
Same scenario, just four lots.
Okay.
And then you'd have the remaining acreage of just about 52 acres.
That you may.
At some point we may, I don't know.
Right, and you could.
Or we might just sell it as one lot.
What's the, what's the frontage here? Is this, oh, it's 400 foot on the first lot?
Yep, and then we.
So that could theoretically be divided again. Right?
Theoretically, yeah, but that wetlands on the right hand side is really gonna affect, you'd have a huge lot loss, you're trying to get a driveway across that.
Well, across the, yeah, you're gonna have to come south of that wetland.
Yeah, I mean, if you cut it right up the middle.
And then lot, lot 11, 12, you're gonna have to build a bridge or something over there, because DES won't let you.
Fill that in.
No.
Where, 11 dash two?
Yeah.
If you go back, yeah.
Yeah, well, if you go, oh, well, if you don't go back, if you, if you.
Well, no, you could build up front.
Yeah, build up front, but you'd have difficulty.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Good part of the soils are gloucester soils out there. There are marginal soils out there, as everybody knows, but there aren't good gloucester soils out there. And again, these are large lots, four lot, large lot subdivision. And the additional 52 acres, we'll cross that bridge and we'll come to it. At this time, we're not looking to do anything with it.
So you're gonna build a bridge?
Who's building a bridge?
I'm not building any.
Does this include the, the sale of some parcels to a butter?
Yes.
So that, that's taking that aside?
Yes. Yep, no, some of these lots are going to, so we've got it, yeah.
Are we gonna want to take a picture?
We'll, we'll.
These, these, you have a, do you have a PDF, can you get a PDF of this?
Yeah, why don't you take this over?
I'll make 269, pick them up, then you pay.
Yeah, we've got extras, that's fine. I'm sure it'll be revamped a little bit, but this is just basically what we're thinking.
Yeah, just, just so we can have it.
I will get PDFs on both sides a little bit, yeah.
On this other one, John, did he list lot line adjustments for that? In that, is that the one we guys are looking at?
This is, this is.
No, not this one.
The other one.
Yeah, it was noted on the.
That's a subdivision.
And lot line adjustment, you have to apply for too. He's gonna add that to the little lot?
No, no, he's not, he's not, he's not changing any lot lines, he's just subdividing.
Well, then it would be.
But if the abutter, if the abutter purchases that property, then it's up to her to come in for a lot line adjustment, not you.
Well, it creates another lot unless you're doing a lot line adjustment at the same time. That's what I just wanted to bring up, it's just a technicality, because you just have to put a note on there that it's a lot line adjustment for that other lot.
Number five.
Or you're gonna be making another, an extra lot on that.
Okay, it is.
He's already got it on.
It's noted, yeah.
Noted, okay, okay.
And you're in the process of doing the storm waters?
Yep, 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 we're doing that on both sides, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
You're good to go.
All right, excellent.
You want any of these back?
Nope.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you guys can hold on to them, and then that way you can, if you, if John feels like reviewing them on a Sunday morning. So the application's been accepted, and the other one is complete, we didn't do any of that.
Yes, hold on, people.
I make a motion that the application for the subdivision.
I got it right there.
With Reed Hurdle Family Trust lots 8-6, as presented on the application, is accepted. I guess that's.
All set.
And that's the property of Pinkham Road. It is seven lots you want to subdivide. That's a bad motion. That's a bad motion, I'm sorry.
That was, that was both of them, by the way, that was both of them?
Okay.
I just didn't know if you wanted.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris, second to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I don't play in there, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. Part of the committee, I don't know. Next.
Thank you. Yeah, I need to call you tomorrow to talk to you about something.
Yeah, that's all right.
You around tomorrow?
All day.
All day.
Where am I gonna go? I can't walk far.
All right.
Although there was one time I tried to walk up here because I wanted to make, to make sure I got heard.
Tracy, thank you for coming, for the.
That's up to the planning.
Scott, thanks for coming on the impact fees.
Absolutely.
Lori, thanks for coming on the impact fees.
Would you, we have a question about his mapping on these lots.
What's that?
His mapping, would you require that to be done on the four acre, on the four lots subdivision?
It's already impacts already, so.
Or is the storm water management playing up?
I don't know.
You want me to answer that, John?
Yeah, go ahead.
Storm water management is way more encompassing than a his map.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Much more encompassing than a his map.
That's fine. Yeah, just.
I'll be going.
We'll do it, okay.
So it will be something done.
All right, so before we leave, unless you hear different, June 22nd, Thursday night, 6:30, okay? The workshop.
And June 8th is our meeting. And June 8th is our meeting.
It isn't because of the very small.
Yeah, it's gonna be a workshop. But, yeah, the basis is regular, June 22nd will be a workshop.
And we laid it out for what they want now, in the future, if you want to look down on it.
All right. Bingo banger.
Is everybody, is everybody all set?
Yes. So if you guys want to talk to them.
You need to make a motion to adjourn.
So on the meetings of June.
Are we adjourning?
Make a motion, somebody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, did you make a motion to adjourn?
I did, 7:56.
Chris motion to adjourn, John seconded.
All in favor?
Yes, and all in favor.
Was it seven, or whatever you got there?
Hey, who's a dog?
I'm with them all.
Hey, no more session anymore.
No, I get it.
They're happy.
I may go.
Here?
I'm hoping there's definitely.
They don't know what the outline number is. We're just gonna be.
I can sign it any way, any way I want. Ryan, now you're on hold.
Hi, how do you know?
Unless he.
Go ahead.
When's that?